The regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for the township of Belleville will now come to order. Clerk, do not pull the roll. No, we're gonna have us sworn in first. All right, Christopher. Mr. Casse is being re sworn in for another two year term as an elected member of the Board. Raise your right hand. Just repeat after me. I, Christopher Casse, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear full, true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in the state under the authority of the people. I, Christopher Casse, do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Board of Adjustment according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Clerk, now you can call the roll.
Carusa.
Yeah, here.
Giannano, Casse.
Here.
Ozell.
Here.
Mafucci.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Malano.
Yeah.
DelGarcia.
Here.
Would you please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, has notice of this meeting been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law?
Certification of the meeting has been advertised according to the Sunshine.
Okay. Members of the Board, have you reviewed the minutes?
Yes.
Any problems with the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Malano. Do I get a second? Seconded by Mr. Carusa. Clerk, pull the roll.
Carusa.
Yes.
Casse.
Yes.
Ozell.
Yes.
Mafucci.
Here.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Malano.
Yes.
DelGarcia.
Yes.
Next is applications for a German. Is anybody wishing to have a German today as their application? No one has said anything. Okay, then I guess everybody's ready. Resolutions to be memorialized, wanna get that out of the way? We'll get that out of the way. You still reviewing it? Oh, hold on. All right, we'll hold off on that. We'll go, any communications? Madam Secretary?
No.
No communication. All right, then we'll hear the first case on the agenda and get going. ZV 2017-011, the applicant is proposing to convert the existing 1,500 square foot, one story structure into a veterinary clinic. That's at 145 North Avenue, Dr. Ashab, I can't pronounce the name. I'm sorry.
Ashraf Shahad.
Shahad, okay. Gina, was there a notice provided?
Yes. Yes.
I got partial.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes. Like it?
Yeah, that's all right. Notice of publication here to be ignored. And they're identified as A1?
Yes.
Maggie, go ahead, Mr. Gash.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Council's name is Robert Gassion. From Miss Gassion, Shamaco, 524 Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant in this matter, Dr. Ashraf Shahad. My client is seeking use and bulk variance relief in order to convert an existing one story 1,500 plus square foot building into a veterinary clinic. The property is located in an R B zone and it's at 145 North Avenue. The proposed use is not permitted. In order to use the subject properties proposed, the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval as well as D1 and bulk variance relief. My client is not adding any square footage onto the building. He is only seeking to use an existing structure. Obviously then all bulk variances are pre-existing. We're not changing anything. The witnesses you'll hear from are Dr. Shahad, Joseph Ashfor, the architect, and George Williams, the planner. Dr. Shahad will discuss his proposed business operation. Mr. Ashfor will briefly describe the proposed layout of the offices. And George Williams, as you would expect, will be the most lengthy witness as the planner. He'll discuss the surrounding area, review the general planning issues, and put forth the basis for allowing the use and bulk variances question, keeping in mind that all the bulk variances are pre-existing. I'd like to call my first witness, Dr. Shahad.
Could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
My first name is Ashraf. My first name is Ashraf, my last name is Shahad, and I'm here to manage and advocate this matter.
You need to spell your name for the court recording purposes.
Yeah, my first name is Ashraf, it's A-S-H-R-A-F, last name, it means Vallet.
Put your hand in here.
Just be honest. Okay, last name is Shahad, S-H-E-H-A-B.
Dr. Shahad, what is your current business address?
It's 23 Cedar Street, Bluefield, New Jersey.
And where do you currently reside?
Baltimore, North Newark, New Jersey.
And where is that in relation to the proposed office on North Avenue?
It's about, not away from North Avenue.
And your occupation is?
I'm a veterinarian.
And do you have a lease with an option to purchase 145 North Avenue in Belleville?
Yes.
And is that contingent upon an approval of this ward to allow you to use that for your veterinary occupation?
Yes.
Is that building currently vacant?
Yes.
Do you know how long, approximately how long it has been vacant?
A year and a half.
And if this application were to be approved, how many employees would be at this location?
One.
So it'd be just you and one employee?
And mine, yes.
And does she also live close by?
About three blocks away.
And can you tell us what type of animal you would be treating?
Small animal, those cats.
And can you give us an approximation of how many appointments you have in a day, in an average day?
Average, yeah, average day is six to eight appointment, six to eight nine under the overall appointment, four.
And are there also days where you do strictly surgery?
Yeah, usually in that couple of days of the week, hour of the week would be strictly surgery.
And your proposed hours of operation?
Nine to six on weekdays, and if there's one weekend days, probably would be nine to twelve.
And that weekend day would most likely be a Saturday?
Saturday, yes.
You plan on having any boarding of animals?
No.
Then if this application would be approved, you would move from Bloomfield to Belleville?
Yes.
Did you do some sort of checking to determine if there are other veterinary doctors in Belleville?
Yeah, according to my checking, there's only one vet clinic, Dr. Tumi Day.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Tumi Day, in Washington Avenue.
T-U-M-I-V-A-Y.
And he's not in full work capacity, he's semi-retired.
He's semi-retired, did you say?
Yes.
I have no further questions to this witness.
Go ahead. When, Dr., when you just said that you're moving to Belleville?
If approved.
If approved. Does that mean your veterinary practice will be moving to Belleville?
Oh, sorry, let me get my separate player. We have a mobile clinic, it's a big mobile clinic.
Okay.
And we go actually, it resides in the office and everything in Bloomfield, but now my ultimate goal as a doctor, I'm gonna get a building.
So you're gonna get a building and have your practice in Belleville, not, you're not gonna?
No, not.
Okay. And where is this in Bloomfield?
It's 23 Weaver Avenue. We actually parked a mobile clinic there, and we go every day, the mobile clinic to lift them, where there's a pitch shop and we park there, and we do that. Now we have ten guys over 2,000 clients, and I just left Belleville and I decided to go.
What are you gonna do with the mobile clinic?
I decide to dissolve it, if we get a group, I will dissolve it and I focus about success in my building.
So you're gonna, you're gonna get rid of the R B that you used for Bloomfield?
Yes.
Mr. Malano?
So I see by your plans, you're gonna do surgery.
Yes.
So I would imagine if you do surgery, you know, animals might stay overnight, right?
Well, not all the surgery needed, the animal actually stays overnight. Most of the surgery we're dealing with is a stay in order, if there's an absentee something. But if there is an animal, therefore, we need an emergency surgery, like, therefore, the animal hit by a car, then I took the oath to save the life of an animal, so I have to monitor the animal, keep it, maybe overnight or something like that, if I have to.
So there would be occasions?
Yeah, but those cases generally it's emergency and most of the doctors like to refer to.
I've been to other veterinary, this is relatively small, I grant you that, but obviously, according to my occasions, you're gonna have to keep an animal overnight.
In a very few, like an emergency case, in very few cases.
Okay. So I see here, you have one employee, so I guess, is that your receptionist or is that a technician?
She is actually, at the beginning, she is my manager, I know, a receptionist. At the beginning of the business, usually, we have, we'll not be that crazy busy. If ten guys, we will get the, set them for the fine, and we'll be with them. At the beginning, I would be fortunately the technician and doctor, she would be answering the phone, just like it's other, like we do now.
Well, it is why I say that, because in your testimony, you said, and I'm happy for you, you have 3,000 clients now.
Yes, I mean, in, yeah, in other town, but how many of that?
I thought you said 2,000.
2,000. I was just trying to give indication.
It was in the thousands.
I was just giving indication that we've been successful and we can move to Belleville and give a chance.
So, regular hours, Monday to Friday, 9 to 6? Weekends, 9 to 5?
No, probably 9 to 12.
Yeah, it's well.
Mostly people, have they early mornings, something like that.
Unless you have to take care of that.
I believe you said only Saturday, I don't think you said Sunday.
Sunday, Saturday.
Do you know, why don't you give some testimony, your buddy, the buildings, they've been vacant? What was there prior to?
It was a lawn mower, a lawn mower.
A lawn mower.
Yeah.
I think it was a drive cleaner, but obviously the planner is more well-prepared to testify to the history of the property, but I don't wanna testify, but I think I knew the guy that was there and I'm quite sure he was a drive cleaner.
Was that after that, was there a printer there?
Yes, I think that was, Case Olsen.
So the last one was printer?
The last one was a printer, that's all. I don't think the printer was there that long, but I think the drive cleaner was there a while longer.
Well, the sign is still there, I think.
I think drive cleaner was there a pretty long time.
Oh, no, the drive cleaner was there for a while.
I remember his first name.
Any other questions, Mr. Malano? Well, any questions by other members of the Board? How many people would you be seeing at one time?
At one time, mostly probably would be, there would be one vet practice, one doctor practice, it's more different, so it would be only see one at a time. So if I have to, there's a room probably, or there's one person in one room and I don't care about the other one, when I finish, I go on. Because the most thing that the fine gave from my experience is weight, and that's why it's by a point.
Do you intend, and give me another, I'm under no obligation, I'm just asking, do you intend to ask the town for reserved parking for customers during the day? In front, because I believe he's only got about two parking spaces in front of the building, that's why I asked the question.
To narrow up, no question.
Oh, no, I'm not talking, I'm just saying, there's no parking off the street, and he's got like maybe two parking spaces in front of the place, that's why I'm saying this.
Yeah, I guess if we see needs, then I will.
Yeah, because I mean, other people don't, that's why I asked the question.
I didn't even realize it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I.
I think that's only for.
Yeah, I don't think so. It is mistaken.
Me?
Yeah, you don't.
Well, I can, I can name a number of businesses that have reserved parking, but I, in front of the business.
When there's no parking, if you get it, I don't think that's something.
One minute, so.
Anyway. So, one other question. So there won't be no animals outside, correct?
No.
Ever? No, no knocking, no cages?
No, well, they will have cages inside.
I see you have four cages in here.
Yeah, just in case we sit in an animal to monitor, which is not making weight up, but the client will be there either, it's a, you turn a medicine formula, it's gonna be a precaution, leave the animal, all the anesthesia and, when the animal recovers, really need to, just, you know, to figure out what kind of, then leave it.
Right, I understand, but, you know, some clinics have outside cages, because they keep animals overnight. This is not that.
No, no, no.
The neighbors don't have to worry about it.
No, no, no.
I would think there's orders.
I'm not saying that, I'm just thinking of what I've seen in other clinics, outside cages.
No, I had a question.
So answer it all.
I wouldn't be taking my pet to someone who did that.
It's a lot.
Any other members of the Board have a question? Yes, no, maybe, no. Okay, any members of the public wish to cross-examine this person best of our testimony only, this witness? None, then you may call your next witness, Mr. Gash.
Mr. Gash.
Could you, when you're ready, could you raise your right hand, please, give us your name and spell your last name?
Okay, Joseph Ashfor, A-S-H-U-C-H-I, up as a friend, who you are, registered architect, licensed professional planner, state of New Jersey, office at 466 Bloomfield Avenue, Newark, and I've appeared before this board before, where the latest.
Four. The latest was where?
The one at the end of Washington, the dollar related store.
Oh, okay.
That used to be the, cost for a long time, Taylor Hall, and about 17, 18 years ago, I did Soul Dominion.
I, well, Soul Dominion was before this board, but the other one, I think, was before the planning board.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Mr. Gash.
Mr. Gash, you want me to go further?
Well, this license is still in effect, we have no problem. You're calling it as an architect and a planner?
He's being submitted only as an architect.
Only as an architect.
Absolutely only as an architect.
All right.
I have a planner here.
If you need, if you need to sit down, I don't think we're gonna have a problem.
I just have a couple of questions.
All right.
It won't take long.
I do.
Were engaged through the architectural work for the interior design of this proposed office?
That's correct.
And just briefly describe the existing site, what is there right now?
Just an existing building storefront, and it's vacant, as far as I know, last time we saw it.
And if this application were to be approved, will any alterations be made to the interior of the structure?
To facilitate a, a, a pet.
A veterinary clinic?
A veterinary clinic, thank you.
And can you describe or show the Board how many rooms an officer, officer, how that will be set up?
We have this ISO.
You have?
We don't need to mark these things, just make a reference to the.
Just reference the office area and the rooms.
Only A1 of the drawings that we've provided you, started with the operating room, X-ray rooms, a treatment room, cage room for keeping the animals, the pets overnight, x-ray room, mechanical room, stairs up and down, a entry and a front desk and waiting area, and that's it.
Will there be any changes to the exterior of the building?
At the time you were there, there weren't any planned, it's been deteriorating on the outside, over, 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 outside.
So anything that's deteriorating will be repaired and improved in appearance?
Absolutely.
I have no further questions to this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Malano?
So these are existing rooms, I mean, they, the layout the way I see it now is not as, as it's there now, could you say, no?
No, this is the proposed layout, I'm sorry.
Okay, look, I'm asking if there changes to the interior.
That's correct.
It didn't sound like, I don't, didn't sound like.
This is what it looks like now?
This is what it was here down when we were there.
Okay.
So everything will be so there.
It would inevitably, to this site.
That's correct.
That's it, Mr. Chairman?
That's it? Yes, question by, Mr. Williams?
Two. There is an area, we said, animal may be kept overnight?
Yes, cages, right near, right near.
Will there be any additional noise suppression to that room?
This is.
There will be no sound transmitted outside the building, even though there may be pets,
there will not be any sound transmitted, they're not loud enough.
Isn't the door loud enough?
I can bring Doctor back up to answer that question, if I could, I think he'd be more qualified to answer the question.
The outside, the outside walls will be insulated, and they're working up.
Okay, you may answer two questions.
Now you answer the question. Go ahead. Mr. Ashfor, you mentioned that there's a area of.
That's correct.
Is there any special treatment for x-ray room in terms of walls and ceilings?
At the time of submission for building permit, we're supposed to provide the building department with the technical, uh, uh, modification of the machine in order to determine as to whether x-ray protection is required or not. And that is usually done by a, I just, I ran my mind around, yeah, a specialist in x-rays.
Okay, all right. Any other questions by members of the Board? Any? Go ahead.
Mr. Gash, you want me to ask this witness regarding the exterior of the building?
I'm sorry, Ms. Malano.
You want me to ask this witness?
Yeah.
About the exterior of the building?
At the time you were there, there were no repairs or upgrades or watering, if anything has happened since then, we will patch it, repair it, and overhaul the, overhaul the whole outside if necessary.
Well, I'm not sure if we have the necessary.
What will be done to the front of the building to make it look more attractive, to make it look like a veterinary clinic?
Will be painted.
What is the material in the front of the building at the present time?
We have, the front is stucco, large plate glass window, door, front entrance door, and shingle.
And what is the condition of that front of the building?
At the time you were there, it was good shape, but I think the weather.
Lighting change here, signage, anything for nature?
There must be some sign, he's not looking for a major sign, I don't believe.
I assume he wants to put a sign to identify the.
Okay, we need to show you the.
Any sign that's put on the front of the building will be in compliance with the municipal ordinance requirements, he's not looking for a large sign.
So he'll comply, so he won't have to miss the feet and wear towels, he'll comply whatever.
Whatever Mr. Lorenzo requires, that's all that he will put up.
That's all I want here. No further questions? No lighting, I would imagine, no lighting changes? Outside lighting?
No.
No.
I have two quick questions. In the treatment room, it looks like there's a double door, is that going to be maintained? I know there's a door there right now, a double door on the side, is that going to be maintained or closed off?
I'm sorry, Michael said.
On the treatment room, according to the site plan, there's a double door on the left wall, is that going to be maintained or is that going to be closed off?
Yes, yes.
That's existing.
Right, is it going to be kept as a?
It will ever be kept.
The other question I have is, I see there's just a single bathroom in the facility in the very rear end of the back corner, is that, that's accessible to both clients and the staff?
The staff, there are not gonna be that many, only one room, you, will be, I'm going to fill out a test power.
Okay.
Mr. Malano?
So the answer is, the customers will be able to use it as well?
Absolutely.
And that is handicap accessible or not?
It's handicap, yeah.
And the outside, is there any, where's the refuge coming in, or is that somebody else there?
I think George, Mr. Williams would be better capable of answering that.
I'll wait.
There is a little backyard.
I'll wait.
Any other questions by members of the Board? You wanna bring him back up? Oh, no, I wanna see, I wanna get this question answered.
Okay.
You're bringing the doctor back up?
Which question you want answered?
I don't know, which one do you want answered?
I'd rather bring up Mr. Williams, I think he can probably answer most of the questions.
Who's Mr. Williams?
No, the question.
He's the planner, no, wait, we gotta ask the public if they wish to ask the witness.
Before you do that, just to clarify, straighten this back out, the question was, and it wasn't mine, it was Mr. Mafucci's about the dog park in, in South.
Oh, the noise, but I thought he caused, he explained that there was insulation, that Mr. Mafucci was satisfied with the answer.
I know, you recommend bring it out, not me.
No, I thought that was sufficient, that there would be insulation.
Well, that was the question.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so now, is there any members of the public who have questions of the witness that was just up? Yes, sir, come on up. It's based upon the testimony that was given by the last witness, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, you can name and address, please?
Yeah, Paul Fernandez, 143 North Avenue, it's the building next to it. Two of my questions is, how about the, the dogs stay overnight?
I'm sorry, hold on, I can't hear, I can't wait till he comes up. So I can hear, please.
How about the dogs staying overnight and the parking, because my bedroom literally faces that building.
So I believe that would be with the doctor.
And parking wise, I'm the only one on that block that has a driveway, last thing I need to do is come home, and there's cars blocking my driveway, or in my driveway.
Well, it's illegal to block your driveway, and I certainly hope no one's gonna block your driveway. As to the dogs being kept overnight, I'd rather recall the doctor to answer that question, I'm sorry, I made you walk back up here.
Well, it's okay, but it's a reminder it's gonna be insulated building.
Yeah. And that was the answer you gave?
That's correct.
Doctor, walk back up, please.
Yes, sir.
General is right next door to the building, and so far, your architect has testified that the room where you will be keeping pets, which you said will be on rare occasions overnight, will be insulated.
Yes.
Based on, based on your experience with the animals that you treat, certainly not the cats. the cats, the dogs that you, at least I. Although the noise he wants, cats don't really make that much. The dogs that you treat. This neighbor is concerned, justifiable, will he be hearing barking during the night, and what will hap, first, how frequently do you think there'll be dogs kept overnight? And second, what kind of noise do you think he'll have, and what precaution will you be taking to make sure he doesn't hear a barking dog tonight?
Yeah, on a daily basis of this career, even for the two days of surgery, we've been doing this for three and another vacation, we never kept a dog overnight.
Talk a little slower, a little louder.
We've never kept a dog overnight, because the anesthetic protocol that we follow, I mean, we have.
I'm sorry, I lost you.
Because of the anesthetic protocol that we follow, and we have.
No, you're going, you gotta go slower and louder.
Okay, we've been doing this almost for three years now. In the day of the surgery that the animal need to be kept overnight, we never kept the animal overnight, for the simple fact that if the animal is recovered enough and fast enough to go, that's what I do. So we use a specific anesthetic protocol that allow us to destroy the animal immediately after the surgery. So it will be done in the morning, and by two o'clock, everybody's out. Number one, number two, regarding the, the sound, if, if we're going to do insulation for the walls, we get it, number three, regarding that you worry about somebody blocking your driveway, you are, you're, it's a bit, so who will be my neighbors, you being there before me, you have a right and we will be strictly respected. So I would not allow somebody to bother my neighbor, or even my business to bother my neighbor, just because I'm helping business, because I don't like somebody to bother me as a neighbor, it's my, so I, that's again, see, that's a promise from me, that nothing will affect you, you probably, it's a promise. I'm not just saying that, I'm just saying what it is. Regarding the building, I would like to add something, the building from outside, there is a plan, outside we're going to put plant, we're going to put stucco, we're going to paint, if the building is really presentable, is helping my business, and it's helping the town, so to present the town and represent the area, and there's a limit, I wouldn't go beyond that, I wouldn't accept it.
Okay, I'm going to answer a couple of questions based on what you just said. You went quickly and maybe the board didn't hear it. I think you say you give a type of anesthetic. That is such that the animal can be released prior to the end of the day, and in the years you've been doing this, I thought I heard you say you have not kept an animal overnight, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, now, there's, Mr. Milano, I believe, is concerned about the looks of the building, and the architect really didn't provide enough information. Tell the board your plans, again, you went through it very quickly, tell the board your plans to improve the appearance of the building.
And let's start calling our flowers.
There's a, the front of the building would be stucco, there's a plan in front of the building, we're going to put flowers on it, maybe a public garbage can, we're allowed to do that, we're going to paint the side of the building, we're going to, what I'm trying to say, we're going to make it as a preserve as I can, because this clinic, the resident town, someone somehow, and the resident has adopted it, so there's a limit, it has to be the resident's property.
And another question, there was a question about garbage, medical waste, I assume you're going to have somebody pick up medical waste, is that correct?
Yeah, by the law, there is a company, there is a bank company to pick up the stuff, it's by the law, I have to do that.
That, that, that waste, so your neighbor knows, stays in the interior of the.
Oh, it's in, it's in medical, has a box to share.
Wait, Willie, I missed your question.
I said, that waste, so the neighbor knows, stays in the interior of the building.
Oh, yeah, it's in, by the law, I have to put inside a medical waste box, and the company come and pick it up, everything has to be, it has to be unstuck.
Now, your normal waste.
And that's a special company that does only picking up of medical waste, is that correct?
Yes, you call it a big amount, it's a special.
And your normal waste, how's that?
There is another company come for that too.
A little container?
It is, it'll be in a, in a lab, in a lab bag, ziplock bag, kept in a, to be honest, they come and pick it up.
That's medical.
Yes.
What about your normal everyday garbage, how's that going to be?
We, we can always system the town, if they didn't, with the garbage outside, we put it outside, if there's a special company that come and pick it up as well. It's usually not a lot, it's just a, a bag.
Go ahead. Do you, on, on the plans, you have the recovery room. In the rare event you have a, a dog that you need to keep overnight, are there any windows in that room, it looks to be a solid wall?
Uh, would be, uh, recovery would be a door, yeah, solid door, yes, there's no window.
There's no windows that would face?
No, there's only, only in front of the door, yes.
That would have helped in?
You know, I think the only thing that faces my side is.
Mitigating the sound.
Two doors, two doors.
Yeah, okay, that's a lot.
Any, any other questions by members of the board? Any other question, yes ma'am, come on up, you have to come up, you have to swear, well, not swear it in, unless we give you the testimony, but you, you have to give your name and address. And before we do that, I'd like to do one thing, can we swear in Mr. Di Lorenzo?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you gotta, uh, you can swear both of them at the same time, if, if Mr. Harretts and Mr. Di Lorenzo raise their right hand with regard to this application, you swear the testimony or about to show me the truth. It's on the officer and our board engineer planner.
Frank, I have a question, in the event you get a complaint about barking, how is that handled if this application is approved?
Barking in which way, the town is real.
Bark will be. Barking. By the door.
Barking, there's a noise. They said bark.
It's a noise complaint.
There's a noise complaint, usually the police handle that, they can see after four o'clock, they have a guy with the noise meter and see what the decimals are.
So it would be handled by the police to mark the.
Yeah, after four o'clock.
Any problems? Okay, yes ma'am.
I was actually just going to ask that, but you asked.
Well, I can't help it if I could.
But I mean, I do have one.
Could you state your name?
You have to state your name and address, please.
Dora Fernandez, and I live, I have 143 North Avenue, so just my.
This is the time for questions of witnesses, not statements, so if you want to give a statement, you'll be able to give one later on. Testimony.
It's a question.
This is only for questions, Frank.
No, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I just was wondering, I'm probably not, I'm not familiar, when they say that there can be used, uh, put insulation in the, in the room, the recovery room, is it a special type that we won't hear the noise at all?
That would be a question of the architect, that would, he don't have to get up, he can answer from back there. What kind of insulation do you use?
Is it different from what we use in?
Okay, there are two types, one is for acoustics, an example of what we use for acoustics is the homosol.
I'm sorry, you said what?
Homosol. And the other one is a thermal insulation that, for example, would be fiberglass. In the case of the room on the, with the cages, the storage room, we will have both on there, one for the requirements of the state for thermal, and then the other one would be, will close the room, the homosol, so that the sound wouldn't get out of it.
So there'll be double insulation in that room?
That's correct.
Any questions, gentlemen? Now we got this, now, you have any question, ma'am?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the audience who has questions of any of the witnesses so far? No, well, Mr. Gashon, you have a third witness? I do. Okay, call him up. Mr. Williams.
Sir.
Raise your right hand, thank you. Regarding this application, you swear the testimony or about to give me the truth?
I most certainly did.
State your name, please, spell your last name.
Certainly, good evening commissioners, my name is George Wiel Williams, Williams Melton, S.W.I.L.L.I.A.M.S.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, would you please give the board the benefit of your professional experience as a planner, I don't think this has testified yet before, have you?
No, this will be my first time. Certainly, I completed my, I'm licensed by the State Board of Professional Planners to practice in the state of New Jersey, also nationally certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I completed my graduate studies in city and regional planning at Rutgers Graduate School, now at Blassey School of Planning and Policy, just to deep myself a little bit. Been practicing in the field a little over twenty-five years now, with a primary focus on land use, of course, community and economic development planning, but I and my firm also practice in a variety of other planning specialties, including developing master plans, zoning ordinances, redevelopment plans, a lot of redevelopment plans, civic engagement, and more recently, sustainable planning and creative placemaking. I've appeared before numerous land use boards throughout the state of New Jersey, but this is council mentioned, is my first time to appear before this, I've got score, but we also, I thought I thought that, we also represent a number of land use boards currently in Orange, Bloomfield, your neighbor, Newark, and Hoboken, we're conflict planners in family. Last but not least, I've had the honor of serving on my hometown zoning board of Montclair City.
Perfect, I think he's an expert. One little thing to click, you only have a degree in planning, you're a strict planner, is that it?
I'm proud of.
No piggybacks?
Nope. Man, you're only being submitted as planner.
Okay, very good. Mr. Williams, review with the board what you looked at in preparation for your testimony in this case.
Certainly, we approach, I approach this application in a way I approach almost every single land use application, and that is with a preliminary view of the local land use documents, in this case, your two thousand nine master plan, your zoning ordinance, all of that in the context of the municipal land use law. Of course, I also reviewed the site plan and site plan application that's before you this evening, I've visited the site on several occasions and am familiar with the area, most recently, I visited this evening on the way to the hearing.
Any municipal documents you reviewed having to do with this site?
Yes, the two thousand nine master plan and zoning ordinance, we also reviewed the case law and planning literature in support of the release that we're seeking this evening. Last but not least, I did, I and my staff conducted a photo survey of the site and surrounding area, I hope to submit two very simple exhibits at the appropriate time to capture those, those photos. Last but not least, I did look at the two thousand nine, no, I'm sorry, the nineteen ninety zoning board approval for the site, and that's where the prior owner, or several prior, the dry cleaner had their approval to operate.
That was done by our board, correct?
Would you discuss the surrounding area, you said you had some photographs?
I do, two very straightforward, simple exhibits, one is an aerial photograph, the aerial imagery for this one is taken from Google Maps, and then we did some overlays just to provide context for the testimony, and I'd like to pass this one.
Why don't we mark that, eight, two, please, approximately, remember these taken, Mr. Williams?
Uh, the aerial photograph, apparently we took several pictures in June, late June, and the last picture, which is figure five, the photo survey, was July third.
Of, of this year?
Of this year, thank you. Which is a good segue to the second exhibit, it's a photo survey of the site and surrounding area on eleven by seven, so.
Mark that, eight, three.
I give one, two, interest important.
Are these, are these, these look different? One has a broken dotted orange line, and one has a solid.
Uh, look at the title, I hope I didn't hand out two different ones.
Zone boundary, municipal boundary. One has a transit bus.
They should, are they marked one forty-five Newark Avenue?
This is a blue one. This is a blue one.
Yeah, that's the, you're two different.
Uh, I see your point.
Okay, so we should have each, each of us should have one of each.
We might not have made sufficient copies in that scenario, and we might, we need to mark one as eight, raised, eight, four, I guess.
All right, so what's.
Counselor, do you have two aerial maps in front of you?
I have, here, they're all aerial maps, really?
Okay.
Gee, am I, you should.
So, that, to, for Commissioner, I apologize, there is a second one, also for this application, it was just added to show the bus stops, so you're right, there are two aerial photographs and then a photo survey, my apologies.
So, the two aerial photographs, eight, two and eight, three.
You're marking it, Counselor?
I'll mark.
I already marked one of them, I'm quite sure I marked the.
Which one did you mark, eight, two, solid, orange? Okay, that's eight, two, and it's broken orange, it's eight, three? Want to do that? Eight, that should be a four. Eight, three is now a four. And that's the photo survey?
Correct.
This is a four. With the help of your three exhibits, would you describe the surrounding area?
Certainly, the commissioners now have three exhibits, the first I'm going to refer to is the aerial photograph without the bus lines, and that was really my intent to share this one, and you'll understand why as I get to the proof. Again, this board knows the area and site as well as if not better than I do, because we live here, I find that this particular type of exhibit is just helpful to give some context for the remainder of my testimony. Looking at this exhibit, the bold yellow line frames the site that's subject to this application, the dash arms line is the zone boundaries, the dash blue line is the municipal boundary, and so we're right on the border of Bloomfield, as you, as you know, on Watts Essing Avenue. The first thing you notice when you look at this aerial photograph is the flat roof of our site, it just kind of underscores the fact that this is an existing commercial use, when you look at the surrounding structures, they all have the pitched residential roof, so you know immediately that this is not like the others. Moreover, it is an elongated rectangular lot, and as you heard and will hear again from me, it is an undersized lot for this particular district. The surrounding properties are labeled by zone districts, RC is across the street from us, it's your multifamily residential, and you'll see pictures in a moment, that's your garden apartment complex, and then around our property are two and some single family homes, you heard from our next door neighbor, I believe, one of the single standard. Last but not least, you can tell from this aerial photograph that there's some dense trees, mature trees around our property, obviously, they are deciduous trees, but when they have foliage, you can see they form a nice screening at the rear of the property, and there's some trees at the front as well. The second aerial photograph, I'll just be very brief, we only prepared it when we were beginning our preparation for this application, and Dr. Ash should have mentioned that he had, he would walk to the science, perhaps even use public transportation, I just submit to the board, it's really what you saw in the first aerial photograph, I won't belabor that, I add to the photo survey. Figure one of the photo survey, it says a frontal view of the subject property, Mr. Ashford described it already, shingle canopy, canopy, plate glass display window, front entrance with two lights on either side, and you see the neighbor's property to the left of our property, here facing our property. What's interesting is each of these photographs, as you look at them, is there is on-street parking, as the commissioner mentioned, typically at least two, if not three spaces, and I'll talk a bit more about that in a moment. You heard about the improvements that are intended to, for the site, primarily aesthetic improvements to the front facade, and as I was reminded today when I looked at the site, again, it does have that concrete planter in front, and the applicant is committed to using that to beautify, by introduction of some landscape through that planter. Second picture just captures our property to the left of us, I believe it's southeast, and that's one forty-three, that property is separated from ours by a white vinyl fence, and that fence we intend to keep, there is a narrow path, pathway on both sides of the fence, our path takes us to the rear of the property, which is relatively small, and you'll hear me talking. Yes.
That fence we mentioned, that yours and the neighbor's?
I believe it's the neighbor's, but I'd have to double check exactly.
Yes.
Neighbor's.
I decided to make sure. They have to keep it.
They have to, or they probably want to, yes. The other side of the property also has a fence, definitely not ours, and that frames the rear yard of our adjoining or abutting property, the front spawn, Watts Essing. Figure four, just a view of the garden apartment complex across the street on Newark Avenue, again, more on-street parking on that side of the street as well. Figure five, someone asked about when the pictures were taken, figure five, we introduced jets to capture one of the morning hour visits to the site and the surrounding area, just to show the streetscape, and give you a sense of not only the land development pattern along the section of Newark Avenue, but also the on-street parking that's available. That becomes significant when we get to the discussion of the parking.
Give us a plan overview if you would.
Certainly, just for the record, this application changed the current commercial structure and former use to a new commercial use, that being a veterinary clinic in. use to a new commercial use, that being a veterinary clinic in what is a pre-existing non-conforming structure on the site, previously approved by this board in 1990 for uses of dry cleaning business. The site is approximately 3, 3,300 square feet, which means it an undersized lot in this zone district, and the building is a one-story matching structure, about 1,500 square feet or 1,518 square feet, to be more specific. The relief that we're seeking from section 23-7.5 of your code, veterinary clinics are not among the enumerated permitted uses in the RB district, so we're seeking a use variance for the introduction of this clinic. Section 23-6.1, if your code speaks to the parking, and if we read and interpret your code correctly, it's one parking space for 200 square feet for approximately seven off-street parking requirements for the site. And as you heard from our architect and the applicant himself, there's currently no parking. In fact, the site is completely landlocked, and so we are not proposing onsite parking as part of our application, and we're seeking the form of a C variance for that. There are a number of pre-existing non-conformities, primarily bulked area, and as this board knows, because we are not exacerbating any of those pre-existing non-conformities, we're not seeking relief for those who are simply seeking the use variance relief and the parking relief. For the record, however, it's in your board professional report, the pre-existing non-conformities are for the minimum lot area. As I mentioned in my introductory comments, 5,000 square feet is required in this district. We are undersized at 3,300. Minimum lot width, with 50 feet is required. We have 32.5, minimum front yard setback, minimum single side yard setback, a minimum total side yard setback, and finally, maximum lot coverage. And again, these are all pre-existing non-conformities, and if you approve us, none of those non-conformities would be exacerbated by that. So based on all that preliminary information, it's my professional opinion that there are sufficient proofs in support of both the use variance and the parking variance, and I'm prepared to walk you through those proofs when counsel prompts.
Well, briefly explain the very general planning issues involved in this application.
Certainly. Generally speaking, broad context before I get into the MLUL language that's required for a proof, it's about how to treat a non-conforming, a pre-existing non-conforming use. Typically, the board looks at what impact on the surrounding neighborhood would occur if you approved this application. As we look at this non-conforming, there are benefits that outweigh any possible detriment. Certainly alleviating a vacancy in this neighborhood is a benefit to the community as a whole. So it's not just a benefit that approves my client, the applicant, but removing a vacancy is important. Similarly, it's my opinion that the proposed use, based on the testimony you've heard from Dr. Shahab, will be a less intense use than that that was approved both in 1990 and that that was there more recently in the print shop. Primarily because, as you heard from the doctor, his clientele's by appointment only. So his use, if you approve it, does not encourage walk-in traffic. Instead, it's just by appointment, whereas the print shop and the dry cleaners are intended for more walk-in traffic, and you would have more visits to the site than you typically would for that neighborhood. So for all those reasons, in terms of the impact of this proposed use on the surrounding community, I would say they are positive, and certainly there is no substantial detriment to the surrounding community. The same went home for the parking, by the way. Again, less intense than the prior use. You heard the testimony from the doctor that it's by appointment, so all in all, and the commitment to the neighbor not to block Broadway, so all in all, there'd be no negative impact if you were to continue the commercial use.
You already testified that the bulk variances are pre-existing, and really, it's a parking variance, and of course, the deapplication. So as to the deapplication, would you review the positive criteria that should be considered in conjunction with that?
Certainly. As this board knows, an applicant for a use variance and for the C variance is required to show both the positive and the negative criteria. For a positive criteria, there's a showing of special reasons, and special reasons can be established when they meet the following, the following criteria. A, the use is inherently beneficial. B, the purposes of zoning would advance if you approve this application. C, the proposed use is particularly suitable for this particular site. And last but not least, if your denial of our application would create undue hardship for the applicant.
Which one do you think fits?
The first three. And I'll talk about the first one. Inherently beneficial, yeah, I'll say it's akin to inherently beneficial, but certainly the advancement, the special, the purposes of zoning, and particular suitability, and those are two I'll focus on. In terms of the negative criteria, as this board knows, we have to show that there'll be no substantial detriment to the public good. Now, word substantial comes directly from municipal land use law, and no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and that's a two-prong test you hear all the time. So beginning with the special reasons, in my professional opinion, the following purposes of zoning would be advanced, and these purposes come from 40.55B-2. The first is section A. It's kind of a catch-all category, and that's why it's the first, but I think it's appropriate for this application. It is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Again, kind of the catch-all clause in the purposes of zoning, but appropriate here is if you were to grant this application, it certainly would encourage the appropriate use of a pre-existing commercial structure in your RB district. More importantly, there is some promotion of public good welfare by alleviating the vacancy. We all know that vacancies in any district, whether it's residential or commercial, are do not promote the public good. Subsection G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all the Jersey residents. Again, bit of a broad clause, but it would be advanced if this board were to approve this application for a couple of reasons. Certainly, appropriate location. You heard the doctor talk about the, his clientele and the demand for this type of use, particularly in Belleville. The environmental requirements, you've heard his testimony that the space and location meet the requirements he has to operate his veterinarian clinic. Finally, section I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. There's not much of a change being proposed to this application. I would just submit to this board that it declines in applicant's intent to further beautify the site in a way he described earlier, through the facade treatment, the planting, introduction of landscaping through the planter, et cetera. So more importantly, removal of a vacancy. So all those are to good and would advance the purposes of zoning. The next is particular suitability, and this board knows that the board can consider whether the proposed use is particularly suitable for the site by thinking about what unique characteristics of the site itself may get particularly appropriate for the proposed use rather than a permitted use, excuse me. In this case, that's kind of straightforward for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, you've got a pre-existing commercial use on a site, but more importantly, the site is undersized, so you could not easily build a permitted use on a site because it's an undersized lot and it's built out entirely. We didn't talk about the maximum lot coverage, except to say that we exceed the coverage. So this building takes up almost 90% of the entire lot. There's a small space in the rear. So for those reasons, it is particularly suitable for the proposed use. In my professional opinion, even more particularly suitable for the clinic because it will be less and less intense commercial use in this residential district. Finally, of course, this board has seen fit to approve a commercial use in the site, so arguably, the same rationale the board applied in 1990 would apply today in terms of the suitability of the site. Finally, in terms of the negative criteria, in my professional opinion, this, if you were to approve our application, it would have no substantial detriment on the public good. In fact, I would argue to this board that it will actually be an improvement to the public good for all the reasons I've mentioned earlier. Certainly would not rise to the level of a substantial detriment, and again, I would argue it'd be a benefit as opposed to a detriment. Again, the same logic that was used in 1990 would apply herein as well.
Just review the bulk issue, if you would.
The bulk issue for?
For the bulk, for the C1 issue, too.
Okay, so, and certainly no substantial detriment to the zone. And so for the parking, no on-street parking, no off-street parking is proposed, and in my opinion, seven spaces are required, zero are proposed. Again, there are no existing parking spaces, so the board could review our request for parking relief. Comments will under both C1 and C2, in my opinion. I'll explain why. As this board knows, the C1 standard is the hardship standard. That is, due to the unique shape, character, topography, et cetera, of the site, it would be impractical to apply the strict standard of your code, which would be introduction of seven spaces. In this case, that happens to be true. The site is landlocked. Even if we had access to that rear lot, which we do not, it's not, there's not enough space at the rear of our building to satisfy the parking requirement. But the reality is, the site is built out entirely, so it would be an undue hardship. The board could also, however, consider our parking relief under the C2 context. And as you've heard probably many a time, the C2 is the flexible C variance and allows this board to consider whether the benefits of granting the relief, that is, zero parking onsite versus seven onsite, far outweigh any detriment. It allows you to kind of do an analysis to determine if on the whole, granting the relief we requested is a better zoning alternative than a strict application of your code. In my professional opinion, that's certainly the case. That is, the strict application of your code is not only impractical, but it's probably not necessary. There's a lot of planning literature that talks about the right sizing of parking demands. That is, if the veterinarian clinic really does not require seven onsite parking spaces because his appointment, his visits are by appointment only, it is probably a better zoning alternative, especially in a residential district, to allow him to utilize the on-street parking than to have a strict application of your code and require seven on-street parking spaces. There is also some court case, there's a court case, landmark court case, that supports this approach, that's the Valenti v. Seaton case, and in that court case, the court found that if a board is comfortable with the applicant's demonstration that the industry standard is less than that of the code, then the board may reasonably grant the relief that's being sought. Again, based on our review of the site, the surrounding area, and discussions with my client, the applicant, it's my opinion that the practical reality is that his demand can be satisfied by using the available on-street parking as opposed to requiring seven onsite parking spaces.
You've completed your testimony. Any conclusion you want to point out to the board?
Uh, no, just again, while we are required to meet our proofs, this is a standalone application, I would just repeat, the same logic and rationale that was applied in 1990 in terms of the proofs would apply here. I think the only difference is, again, that this use is perhaps less intense than this commercial use that we approved in 1990. No further questions, Commissioner.
So my question to you, when you say the same stuff approved in 1990, and assuming when it became a print shop, you're talking about there were seven spots required for those uses of here. Is that your meaning to it?
Correct. Both for the use variance itself, meaning that this site was appropriate when it had a substantial detriment on the public because it's commercial, and for a parking as well.
Right, and so they had the same hurdles back from 1990.
Correct.
Seven spaces. I don't know what it came to.
I think it was a, the 1994, I think, was for cleaners.
It was for dry cleaners.
I was on the board at the time.
The 1990, I, I said, the 1990 laundromat, whatever it was, cleaners, and now it's a print shop. I don't know. It would be the same hurdle for that. Is that the?
I don't know when it went from cleaners, laundromat, not laundromat, cleaners, to a print shop, but I think it was a cleaners for a very long time, and I don't think it was a print shop for very long, so I can remember.
Right?
Yes.
So it would be the same requirement, right? Parking lots, right? It's still the same square footage?
Same square footage. It should be the same parking. I'd have to check it and have to go back to the old coordinates of 91, what the dry cleaner did.
Okay. That was my question.
Well, I think, nothing to rub, but technically, we're talking about it needed the same amount of parking spaces, but I think what was involved is the intense of each use.
Not arguing, I didn't ask that question.
Well, technically, that comes into play if how, how many parking spaces you need.
No, no, what I said was, my question was.
That's what you said. I'm saying what I'm saying.
No, I'm, no, don't interpret my question.
I did not interpret your question.
My question was, there's no seven requirements slots, and the answer was yes.
Yes, because it's the same square.
Everybody noticed last morning about intensity. I don't need a translation.
No, I'm not translating. What I'm saying is, we have to consider what the use was at the time, because I approved that back in.
If that's intensive, that's intensive.
Okay?
If you think about it, the dry cleaners are putting in that overtime.
Correct.
If he's got a point, only, they're only coming in at a specific time and not to include four people.
As long as he don't schedule that one. That's the whole thing in a nutshell. Because we've been to doctors' offices that we approved, which is similar, and you see how backed up everything is.
Well, again, I think.
That's the only reason I'm saying this.
But the beginning of the whole point, number one, this is not the time it was made at. Like, my question was, someone clears, was how many parking spots were required at that?
I'm not arguing that.
That's it.
And just to point a confirmation.
Can I answer that? Can, can you answer it my way?
I'll try.
Is that answer not based on the square footage?
That's what I asked.
Not based on the usage.
That's quite easy.
But by square footage, right? And so your board professional answered it better than I did. So my attempt to answer your question was that, while I don't know what the square foot calculation back then would have been, I know that because it's a commercial use, it would have required some onsite parking. The exact number to your board professional point, I don't know.
Right, I could have changed.
Correct.
Yes, somebody else has a question?
I wanted to comment. My vet, I've been using the veterinarian, Dr. Brenda King, for many, many years.
On Bloomfield, right?
Uh, she's off of Bloomfield. She's off the main part of Bloomfield. She operates by appointment only, and she only have, she has the luxury of a little driveway next to her building. But in all the years, whenever I have an appointment with her, because she operates by appointment only, there's always a spot available. I've never really ever had to worry about parking on the street. And granted, she does have a municipal lot nearby, but because she's very conscientious about scheduling her clients by appointment only, and she gives enough buffer time, there's almost always a parking spot available. So I, I don't, the way you've described it, I don't see really any issue with the parking situation. I'm comfortable with, with what you've given us.
Commissioner Sheldon, thank you for saying that. Counsel told me to eliminate that from my testimony, because he told me to be brief, but as a Montclair, I would confirm there are at least three veterinarians when I was growing up. One was on Bloomfield Avenue, and while they have proximity to the municipal lot, everybody pulled up part of Bloomfield Avenue at the meter and.
But it's, when the, the practice works by appointment only, it just not work, and essentially, it's not a problem. I did have one other question. This might overlap between your realm and the architect, and that's security. Because veterinary practices have controlled substances onboard, I would like to see some sort of video surveillance system installed so that if there's an incident, if there's a break-in, you know, you've got things like fentanyl and ketamine.
My client has indicated by shaking his head that absolutely he planned to do that.
Both inside and outside.
Correct. Yes. Well, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Sorry.
Doctor, doctor, you've indicated that you had planned to have video surveillance inside and outside, is that correct?
Yes.
And if the board were to make that a condition of any approval, should they deem fit to approve this? You have no problem with that?
Yes. Plus, I follow that the D locks inside is safe, locked safe, because it's my responsibility. You know, one, I'm sure, it's my license, and I would not risk.
I'm sure you'll, you'll exercise all the precautions, but it doesn't preclude, in the nature of our society these days, you're going to be a hot target. So in case, in case anything ever happens, to be able to assist, involve the police department with investigations, to have the video surveillance. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions of the witness? Any members of the public have questions of the witness, face the front testimony given? Okay, Mr. Gash, you have any?
No further questions, Chair.
Okay, is there any members of the public who wish to give testimony on this application?
Okay, is there any members of the public who wish to give testimony on this application? Yes, ma'am. Come on up, name and address, please.
I'm numb from sitting so long. Good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Salvato Tabodella. I would be that one employee that would be wearing many hats. I would be doing this...
Oh, wait, wait, she's got to be sworn in. We got a square one.
Could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the comments that you're about to give have given the truth?
Yes.
And your name, your last name, can you spell it?
Salvato, S A L, V as in victory, A T O, Tabodella, T A B O A, D as in dog, E L A.
Thank you.
I would just like to let everyone know, I know Dr. Ash from working at Dr. Cameron's office in Montclair from about six years ago. He was my vet there. I saw how just brilliant and amazing he is. He saved a couple of my animals' lives. I've been in the rescue world for approximately 30 years, and I've never seen a more brilliant surgeon and doctor than Dr. Ash. Like, we call him Dr. Ash. Also, I, we have never, in the three years, we've never kept an animal overnight. We, I would be doing the scheduling, so I do know how to schedule so that there wouldn't be two people waiting, because I have been at Dr. Cameron's in the past and sat there for three hours waiting. When you have a cat in a carrier, it's very frustrating. I would not let that happen to a cat.
Very stressful for the cat.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Any members of the board have questions of the witness? Any members of the public have questions of the witness? Okay, is there any, would you want to ask any questions, Gashion?
No.
Okay. Is there any other members of the public who want to give testimony on this application? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Come right up and give your name and address, please.
Venus Resimidi. I'm sorry, one more time. Venus Resimidi, R E S C I M I P I. It's spelling your first name, too. V E U S. Okay, thank you.
Could you, could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear your comments show me the truth?
Yes.
Could you please speak up?
And can you please keep your address before you go on?
Oh, 55 Roosevelt Avenue in Bellevue, New Jersey.
Okay.
That's better, okay.
Dr. Ash has been my vet for over four years. He actually saved my cat's life. My cat went there, he came back home, my little Penny that I have now, he's three cars, dropped her up in the morning, and I picked her up. So, I think, we don't, don't say that. He was very bad, and he's very brilliant.
Any members of the board have any questions of the witness? Any members of the public have questions of the witness? And Mr. Gashion, do you have any questions of the witness?
No.
No.
Okay. Is there any other members of the public who wish to give testimony? If not, I will leave it up to you to sum up, Mr. Gashion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there's no addition being made to this building. It's close to a hospital and other professional offices. It's in an RV zone, but it's RC right across the street. Obviously, he's serving a need for this community. There's been testimony, what a terrific doctor he is, and I think his integrity was obviously, when he talked to the adjacent property owner, I was personally impressed, it was my client. We're eliminating an existing vacant structure. Both the doctor and his employee live within walking distance of the facility. We've only got a 1,500-square-foot building, and the lot is about 3,300 square feet, so there isn't a lot you could do with this. Previous history, you've heard. Dry cleaner, print shop. They're going to get more traffic for sure. Dry cleaner's got people pulling up. I mean, every few minutes, the dry cleaners I go to. So it's, it's a lot of traffic compared to what we have on an appointment basis, as Mr. Sheldon pointed out. That's crucial. That's what my client does. That's what his assistant just said when she stepped up. There certainly is no substantial detriment if this is allowed. No harm to the intent and purpose of the zone. He's, there's, the neighbors were here, the adjacent property owner, but they're not really objecting, they had a concern, and their concern, I think, was resolved when my architect and witnesses indicated there'd be double insulation, both for heat and sound in this building. And of course, my client does not object if the board were to make that a condition. My client's indicated security cameras both in and out. There will be some facade improvement and concrete planters. The planner testified and had pictures of on-street available parking. Certainly less parking than the previous uses. I think this is a D1 application, and that's the crucial part, but there is the hardship of the property, and the benefits outweigh the detriment for the C, for the bulk variances, which not significantly, because they're all pre-existing except for the parking, which obviously would be a variance for anybody that went here. There is no available parking. I thank the board for their time and attention in listening to this case.
Board members, your pleasure. I believe that if it does get approved, there's at least two or three conditions. Grab, Mr. Sheldon. If the board does approve this in addition to our normal conditions, I have, it might be a good idea to put the hours of operation.
Hours of operation, insulation, cameras...
No warning of animals.
The front, the side, okay? And...
No animals outside.
No animals outside.
Medical waste handled.
And most importantly, and I don't think the doctor would mind, is an appointment-only practice. We can have that in that residential...
And he's going to comply with ordinances.
What else can you say?
Insulation and...
With the appointment.
Video surveillance.
I believe with the appointment, no more than one appointment at a time.
Appointment only, how much, again, I'm not going to get into...
It's an emergency.
Except of an emergency.
Except of an emergency, I agree.
And that's, and then our normal conditions in bars for works.
That's all the missing parts.
That's it. Any other members of the board have any other conditions or want to say anything about the conditions we mentioned?
Did we miss anything?
No, we're good.
Why not?
Seven heads are better than one. Okay. All right, so, gentlemen, motion to approve by Mr. Valano. The seconded by Ms. Lozoff. I gotta get her name right.
Ball, ball alternates can vote.
Yes, and she could second.
Lozoff.
Ball alternates can vote because two regular members are not present. That's the motions to approve, it's their names.
With the conditions that...
With the conditions that have been mentioned, yes. Yes, if you're ready, ball roll.
Long, wait, creep.
Okay.
Carusa.
Yes.
Casse.
Yes.
Lozoff? Yes. Afucci?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Absolutely, yes.
Valano?
Yes.
El Gershia?
Yes, approve seven of the numbers.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Now, Mr. Gashion, that should drive you crazy. But, but, I think you're right, we're not going to reach you for number five.
Okay.
So you want to adjourn it till next month, correct?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So anybody in the audience, ZB 2017-13, 44 Tapan Avenue. The applicant is seeking certification for not conforming use to continue to use the property as a three-family dwelling. That will be adjourned to next month on September 7th. There will be no further notices either in the newspaper or in the mail. Yes, you want to... Yes, me too. We will have a 10-minute recess. Are we ready, girls?
Yes.
Okay. The regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustments for August 3, 2017, is now back. On the record, any motions for adjournment?
Yes, we're moving to adjourn number three.
Number three, ZB 2017-009. Who is making the request for the record?
For the record, fairly, [unintelligible] represented by Mr. [unintelligible] with the property owner.
Okay. This says Joseph Asfaw.
He's the architect.
They put him as...
I don't know.
Oh, 22 Heckel Street. Applicant is proposing to construct a new two-family dwelling on vacant land. There will be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper. However, I got to ask him a question.
Did the notice have Mr. Asfaw as the applicant?
No, no, it doesn't. It should have been Mr. [unintelligible].
Exactly.
I'm going to get that straight, because otherwise, we know what happened on Thursday. That's why I'm asking.
Just we hear the message.
The notice is signed at the bottom by Mr. [unintelligible]. Bottom left. All sudden, I have copies of all the ones that went through to the people on the list and they're signed by Mr. [unintelligible].
Okay. Am I right? Okay.
It's all right.
It's all right, okay. There will be, anyone interested in this application, there will be no further notices either in the newspaper or in the mail. That is adjourned to our next meeting on 9/7/17.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who was here for ZB 2017-10, Highland Avenue?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
You're here for Highland Avenue. I don't know if we'll reach that, because this is a D application that we're hearing next, and the last one took an hour and 20 minutes, and I don't believe we'd take any testimony after 9:30. No new testimony at 9:30. So I think we may have to adjourn your case.
Very well.
All right? So ZB 2017-10, and this is the first night it's on the agenda, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the applicant is proposing to convert the existing four-family dwelling into a five-family dwelling. The fifth unit would be located on the ground level. This is a D application, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, for anybody who's interested, that's 1-3 Highland Avenue, Salvatore Gagliol. That is being adjourned to 9/7/17. There will be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper.
And you provided notice?
I did, I gave the original green cards to Gina just now, and the publication in the newspaper.
Okay, how about the white cards?
I have the white, they're not stamped at the post office, I have a...
The list. You have the list at the post office, stamped something that, that, that shows that...
I have the green receipt card signed by the...
I don't care about the receipt cards, they're, they're nothing. Just that, when they were mailed is all I care about. What the people received...
Because it has to be done timely.
Is not required by the law. Just the white cards or something that shows when you handed them to the post office. It's easier for them.
I'll give you that date in a minute, under oath.
Okay. It's when they were handed to the post office. Was it at least 10 days prior to tonight, your goal?
Absolutely. Prior to July 20th.
Prior to July 20th. Okay, that means there's a specific date or just prior to...
Well, I know it was the same, yeah, thank you, but that's nothing else. It was in the newspaper, July 20th, and I mailed them to the neighbors prior to the newspaper.
Okay. All right. And I'll take your word for that, all right? So we're good.
Okay, so the next case, and the only case left on the agenda for that, is ZB 2017-012. The applicant is supposed to occupy approximately 8,500 square feet of the first floor to manufacture and package their products.
Can I mention with the, Counselor, can you, between now and the 7th, could you provide the board secretary with whatever you have? I have the notice, I have the notice, that was in the paper, but if you, whatever you have, other than, I mailed them prior to...
I'll submit an affidavit of mailing.
Okay.
When I get back, I see what day I...
We're good. We're good.
Ms. Perdah, I assume this is your case, and you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my privilege tonight to present to you the application of Goldnut Corporation. I have my witness before me, who's the president of Goldnut Corporation, Mr. Doug Deutsch. Do you like to get the...
Why don't you tell us briefly what your game plan is tonight, you know, the number of witnesses?
Very brief and to the point, game plan, including testimony, experts, and myself. I trust the board has looked at the plan, breathy notes. Mr. Deutsch has an operation currently, been in business for 25 years in Brooklyn. He packages nuts and fruits. We brought some samples, which we're going to distribute at the slide. We're rocking like charts, a classic, just... And it includes the members of the public, if anybody would like...
Let's not, let's, after, after the hearing, then we'll...
No, no, we don't have the hearing.
It's only to understand what it is that they're producing. It's edible.
This could be construed as what's happening here. We don't even need to mark them in the notice, but...
In any event, so they're packaging.
Marina, I think this board is contaminated.
Well, I didn't bring in cake. We did that once before.
No, we did that.
I did that, too.
Oh, you did?
The baby company, yeah, we had lots of them. In any event, their samples, you can see that they're packaged, they're not being manufactured there. They come in, involve, and Mr. Doug will tell you how they come, they're packaged and sent out for shipment.
And then you have a planner, you see Mr. Bablin here?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
So it's, it's this witness and a planner?
That is correct.
Isn't Mr. Bablin your engineer, too?
No, he's my planner slash...
Your seal is here? As what?
Whatever you want me to be.
He has multiple hats on ice.
Oh, we know that.
So for the record, for the record...
Who signed it? It's a P E.
Is that your seal?
That's my seal.
And that's a P E seal?
That's P E.
An engineer, right? So you're, you're, he's also the engineer on this project, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I know, he's doing doubles duty.
Well, he's it planner, but he's also the...
No, he said he was only going to testify.
But he's the engineer.
Are you both an engineer, but you'll be testifying as a planner?
I'll do whatever. I'll do both.
But are you an engineer?
But are you an engineer? Let's be honest, though. Because this is a minor site plan, I think we have to have engineering testimony.
Right, and that's why there's a seal.
And because it's a D, we have to have planning testimony. So we need to do both.
So they'll, they'll do both.
I'm just trying to help you turn it around.
You're welcome, okay.
I promised you seven members, you got seven.
Okay.
And I promised you some brief testimony, but enough to elicit the, the understanding as to what's going to be conducted on the property.
Well, I'm not, I'm not looking for a little testimony for engineering, I'm looking for a little testimony elsewhere.
Okay. Could you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
With regard to this application, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give show me the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Doug, first name, the last name is Deutsch, D E U T S C H.
D E U T S C H. And your first name, could you spell that off?
D O V.
D O V. Thank you.
Mr. Deutsch, are you the president of Goldnut Corporation?
Yes.
How long have you served in that capacity?
Twenty-five years.
What is the current address of your establishment?
Four, four, five Park Avenue, Brooklyn, eleven, two, six, ten to zero, five.
You've been operating there for twenty-five years?
Yes.
Can you tell us the, um, regarding the proposed operations and transfer of your business to the available site that's currently under scrutiny tonight? Can you tell us the proposed hours of operation?
We work nine to five, Monday to Friday.
How many employees do you have or intend to have in Belleville?
Eight, eight employees.
Eight employees, is that about how many you have now?
Yes.
And in terms of these employees, tell me how they get to work, is it public transport, do they commute by car? Explain to me.
We come carpooling, often we're gonna take employees, a lot of employees. Say the guys in Brooklyn are not actually gonna be able to come over here. I'm gonna prefer to find guys locally.
How many of these employees currently are driving to work?
Now, four.
Four, and do they come together?
They come the carpooling.
Okay, so how many of...
Other employees are locally, they don't have to travel.
So how many cars are employees going to be parking on-site?
Two.
And are you also going to park a car there?
Me?
Yes.
Coming with a crew, coming with the guys together, you know.
Okay, so two cars will be parked on-site in terms of the operations of your business, is that correct?
Correct.
Can you please, um, tell me about, um, any trucking operations for delivery of product? Do you have any, any trucks that belong to your company?
I have two vast trucks that can lay, you know, deliveries.
What, what are the hours of delivery like? Give us, give the board an example.
The hours of deliveries, the, most of the time we are out, you know, on deliveries, you know.
What time in the morning do they go out or what time do they come back?
They go out in the morning, uh, like nine o'clock, and after all, they come, they come back like five o'clock.
And then the trucks would remain on-site?
On-site, yes.
And it's, in your testimony to this board that these trucks have basically a parking area near the overhead doors on Valley Street, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
And they would remain on your site on Valley Street?
That's correct.
Outside or inside? Outside or inside?
Outside or...
There's a lot over there.
Tell us about, uh, your, just briefly about the operation, what do you do on this, what will you be doing in this site?
We get merchandise, ready merchandise.
Such as?
Nuts, candies, and, uh, they break it open, and then we just re-pack them. We contain it like this.
So the merchandise arrives in bulk in sacks?
In boxes, in boxes, in boxes.
In bulk?
In bulk, yes, twenty-five pounders, thirty-five pounders, thirty-pound, and then we re-pack them.
In smaller packages?
Correct.
Some larger, some smaller, about the same?
All of these are, these are our size.
And then they get distributed to markets and, and, uh...
Yeah, to stores.
And what kind of waste is produced in the packaging process?
Ninety-five percent is boxes, ninety-eight boxes, and then they're inside, you know, the boxes, we gotta break it open, and, uh, we pick it up outside.
Is that what you currently do in, in the Brooklyn operations and you tend to continue the same exact type of operation in Belleville? Um, is there any, I know that on the plan it shows some, uh, an area of, uh, some, uh, uh, filling, packing, roasting room, can you tell us about that, what goes on there?
Yes, a few items that we do, our own roasting, almonds, for example, almonds and cashews, we do our own, our own roasting. We have like pizza ovens, oh, pizza ovens, and, uh, only a few items, most, eighty-five percent of the products comes in already, pretty typically be packed. Except for a few items that we do, roasting on the spot, just, uh, pizza ovens, few pizza ovens.
And lastly, Mr. Doug, how is it that you come to the town of Belleville from Brooklyn? How did you...
I have a good friend of mine, sir, Mr. Oberlander, he has a bakery, a few blocks down, uh, Little Ed's, he's a, uh, bakery here.
Factory?
Factory, yeah, he bakes cakes. And he told me about his town here, he told me he wants to be my neighbor.
Can you spell his name for me?
What?
Can you spell his name?
Autobahn Bake, Autobahn.
Or Autobahn?
Autobahn Bake.
Oberlander.
Oberlander.
Spell Oberlander.
Oh, Oberlander.
Oberlander is O B E R, A N D, B, E R.
Thank you. And his operation is on Portland Street?
Portland, yeah.
Okay, so he's a friend of yours and he enticed you to come to Belleville, where you hope to be doing business, correct? No, for the questions of the witness, I offer the witness to the members of the board.
Members of the board, Mr. Mafucci. You're the first one up.
Your roasting machine?
It's not a machine, it's a, it's a oven, it's a pizza oven.
What does it use for fuel?
Gas, natural gas.
Yes, okay, now what about the venting?
The other chimney goes out.
Does it exist now?
By code. It has to be done by code, whatever is spec'd out by, by...
No, I'm saying, is there a chimney there now or you have to add it?
I don't, it has to be added, and that's part of the plan, and I believe Mr. De Lorenzo can address it when it's submitted to him, because by code it has to have certain requirements.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it's filtered, it would have it.
Yep, yeah, they should.
On the plans, there's one filling machine, one packaging machine?
Yes.
And nineteen packaging tables. If you only have eight employees, why do you need nineteen tables?
Yeah, we can't, so you're saying if you only have employees, why do you need all these tables?
Oh, the tables?
Tell them.
We use the tables just for, you know, we pack the product, and we have to pack them in boxes, you know, we need tables.
I just wonder why you need so many?
You leave them on top after the packaging, so...
We use the table, this is, uh, this is what we use, tables, yeah, this is our operation, tables, you know.
Now, your trucks that do the delivery, how big are they?
It's box trucks, you know, like...
Oh, boxer?
Yeah, box truck, yeah.
Now, what about the bulk supplies that come in? How large a truck do they come in?
Also not large trucks, not very large trucks.
Box trucks, and...
Box trucks, yeah, box trucks.
What do they like?
And how often...
They're not tractor trailers, are they?
No, no, we don't, no, no, we got a pallet here, a pallet there, nothing, nothing major.
How often would they be coming?
Sometimes twice a week, three times a week, you know, it's a really small operation, it's not a big operation.
Do they come in the morning, do they come in the afternoon, generally?
Generally, they come, I think, in the morning, you know, like AM, AM.
Okay, so it would be after your box trucks leave to go out for deliveries?
Yeah, of course, yeah, they come with some stuff, a bunch of things, you know.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
Any other members of the board have questions?
We still belong.
So I'll, I'll try it again. Mr. Mafucci has the same question. You have all these tables, what's the significance to the number four on each one?
What is this number four?
Shelby Shelby. Shelby, Shelby, all Shelby.
Shelby, oh.
Oh, they have to keep it in small boxes, they pack six in a case.
Queen's table?
Very small boxes, they use, uh, you know, Shelby's.
Okay, I got it. So the boxes that you break up...
Six, fit six contents in a box, no, you know, it's four boxes.
But the ones that you, that you don't use, you throw out?
Break them open, yeah.
And where do they, where do they go?
See, Brooklyn, we have, we have, uh, you know, recycling complete, now pick it up.
So what, is that stored inside or outside?
It's gonna be inside, only, only when you pick it up, you put it out, put it, pick it up, you do it outside, that's what we do in Brooklyn.
That's another question I have.
Yes, Mr. Russo.
And the entrance won't be on Rutter Street?
Yeah, the man, the...
Yes, yes.
Yes, the man...
That's where this is?
That is correct.
Yeah, this is the man.
And you're gonna have a second floor there too?
Second floor, it's not mine, though.
That's rented, I believe, to guns for Hani.
Got you, stairway to the second floor.
Yeah, but there's another way.
He's a tiny...
Somebody else. How many health?
You won't interfere with the roofing company, right? The roofing company's in the back on Valley.
Correct.
I know that area just long here, all right.
So, if I may ask, his testimony is he's using the first floor only?
That is correct for his operations, you're using this portion of the first floor only.
Yeah, the front, yes, that's correct.
But even though there's a stairwell, if the court inspector went there, they would only find them using the first floor, correct?
That is correct, whatever's on here, anything else, you may have to come back.
The second floor is vacant, right?
Has to be presented.
Right, Frank?
Could you do one?
I said, so if you went there, you would only have permission to use the first floor, right?
Whatever, whatever you guys approve on the, approve on the plan, that's all they could do, right?
Right, first floor?
Yeah, we'd make that, we'd make a petition, it would make a petition on the zone, it's obvious.
Okay, that's all.
For now, we just set the condition.
Well, that's all I'm saying, if you're gonna use the second floor, I don't care, but...
We have to come back.
That's all I'm saying, okay?
Mike might understand that he would have to come back to refer to application if he needs to expand.
And I hope he does, I hope he does. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I have a couple, couple of questions to ask. As a follow-up to what Mr. Mafucci was asking about the venting of the oven for the roasting room?
Yes.
Is this just gonna be a vent at street level, or will there be ductwork going up?
That's required, you're gonna do it, you have to go up, you can run a, a, no.
Since this is going to be protruding, I guess, you know, six, seven, eight feet above grade, is there any concern to the public? Because there's a side, there's a sidewalk right there, people may be passing by, and you're gonna be exhausting hot gases through this...
It's a regular oven, like in the house, it's not a, it's not a big, it's not a big, uh, nothing major, it's like, like a pizza oven. Whatever's required, you're gonna do, you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, when it comes into us, we handle that at our level, on a court level, okay?
Well, as, as, one other concern, um, since you are going to have, um, eating equipment, roasting equipment, is there a sprinkler system already in place, or is that something that has to be...
That handles us at our level, that's not your level, that's handling a couple of court.
Any other ques, any other questions, my members of the board? Questions, my members of the public of this witness? No questions, okay, you may call your next one?
Yes, Deutsch, I thank you very much. Have a seat, you're on, for time of my engineer slash planner, Mr. Baumann.
What did you talk about first?
Why the case is testimony, the...
Uh, should we talk about the engineering first and then the planning?
That's right.
I think that would be a smart move, yes.
Raise your right hand, please, Mr. Baumann, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you shall give shall be the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
The name is Paul Baumann, the last name is Paul B A U M A N.
And you've been before this court before, and it's my understanding you're testifying as an engineer and planner?
Oh, okay, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Baumann, would you, from the engineering aspect, take us through the application so the board has an understanding as to what is going on within the confines of the space?
This application, uh, replaces another application that this board saw with this identical place a year ago. Less than a year.
Few months ago.
The occupancy is going to remain in the same envelope that the prior approvals that the board granted were approved for. The space on the interior of the building is not going to change, except to maybe do some cosmetics on the floor to make it a cleaner operation, but that's beyond this board's purview, that'll be under building construction. The rest of the building is going to remain intact, there's not gonna be any change between this floor and the second floor occupancy. Uh, the exterior of the building will remain the same, I've designated four parking spaces for, uh, Goldnut, and there's need for only one, maybe two, for the existing, uh, pen roofing operation that's on the remainder of the first floor. On the interior of the building, basically, there's going to be two compartments for processing and packaging, and then there'll be the rest of the area for deliveries and bulk storage for both the incoming, large quantity boxes to be broken down, they'll be transported through the double doors between the two compartments into the packaging and, uh, processing machine, those that involve roasting for the almonds, what, what was it, not forget, there was another...
Cashews.
Cashews. That will be taken to the very frontmost part of the building, in the front corner on the Valley and Rutger Street area, where there are two pizza ovens located right in the very corner of the, the building in the front. They will flow from that to a glazing machine, where they'll be coated with, um, a sugar glaze for one of the varieties of the almonds that are produced. And then it will go from those two rooms into the conveyor and packaging area that's behind it. There, there are three-foot by six-foot packing tables in that room, there are filling and packing, uh, one filling and packing machine called number five. I've tried to enumerate by numeric code what you're looking at, so we can go through, the number one is the roasting ovens, the two pizza ovens, number two stands for the two, three blazing machines. Number three stands for the tables, they're three-foot by six-foot, number four stands for all the shelving, that will be four-foot by ten-foot by eight-foot high, uh, where their inventory will be consisting of incoming large packages and processed into smaller unit boxes for delivery outside of the, the processing area to...
Number five?
And the number five stands for the filling machine that's inside the packing room. I've tried to give it color, I mean, uh, numeric code so that you can understand how the process will flow. There's basically no building alterations involved for this.
Mr. Baumann?
There are two lavatories, so there's enough occupancy, uh, capacity for seven or eight employees, whatever, uh, Mr. Deutsch and his company choose to have. There's one immediate to the processing area, there's one in the receiving and delivery area.
Mr. Baumann, one of the concerns of the reported, Mr. Tom Haritz, was that perhaps this operation might conflict in some way with pen roofing, that's, is that going to happen?
No, uh, similar to what we testified with the last application for this area, pen roofing starts their day seven o'clock in the morning or earlier, they return four, five, six o'clock at night. This operation will be only from nine to five, um, and so the inflow of traffic and outflow of traffic will not conflict with one another. There's suitable areas for each occupant in the building to park, and the, the nice thing about this, and I'll talk to it further in my planning testimony, is they're complementary uses and low-traffic-volume tenants, so they don't conflict with one another's operations.
I'm going to stop, Mr. Baumann, here in terms of the engineering aspect, and perhaps offer him the questioning before we move on to the planning aspect.
Yes, Mr. Malon, yes.
I don't know this answer, but in this operation, is there any kind of FDA, you know, requirements because of risk, food that is involved?
Food and what?
You know, FDA or cleanliness, you know, because, you know, you gotta...
Board of Health?
This would...
Board of Health, and I believe the state they gotta...
Board of Health, okay. Yeah, so...
That, that happens when it comes to...
Well, Board of Health went out there, okay.
If you're also cautious, so I know it might be a little more rigorous, even based on the fact that I'm not a...
He answered my question, the Board of Health goes, I, that's good for him.
Yes.
That, that's all.
Other questions? Any other questions, my members of the board? On the engineering part? Any questions, my members of the public on the engineering part? You may now move on to planning.
Okay, Mr. Baumann?
I'm still a...
Yes, so I know that. You only have to give the over one.
With respect to the planning aspect, can you take us through some of the required criteria, the positive, the negative, for us to...
Basically, the board has seen and read the notes governing the use, so you understand the scope of work that's involved in their operations, and so I would offer the positive criteria by statute on NJSA forty fifty-five D two. I would offer that paragraph or section two A. The, the use promotes the general welfare purpose of section two A because sites particularly suited for a multiple of uses. It's already been historically used by three or four tenants, this is a backfill situation from one tenant, see that the board approved within the last six, seven months, to what is now the same usage area. It's no more intense than what was previously approved by the board in its last review of the, that area. Um, it allows for the multitude of uses coincident with one another because they don't have, uh, similar operation hours, so the traffic flow doesn't contribute to... similar operation hours, so the traffic flow doesn't contribute to a problem in the neighborhood, and the uses are complementary in that the parking is sufficient when you look at the types of uses and the number of employees and when they will be occupying space, so it's a win-win situation for the occupants as well as keeping the building fully occupied. Second goal that this application supports is providing space at appropriate locations for a variety of uses to meet all the needs of New Jersey citizens. As I mentioned before, there were up to four separate tenants at one time in this building, and they all successfully operated coincidentally because of the factors I just enumerated: non-coincident usage hours, non-coincident arrivals and departures of their vehicles, and not numerous requirements for parking. So from that standpoint, the new proposed use can be accommodated on the first floor, on the backfill, without being a problem to the neighborhood or to other tenants in the building. And the last purpose of zoning that this application supports is the efficient use of land. It's a low intensity use, and by efficiently using the building to its fullest capacity, it supports that purpose of the zoning act. On the negative side, the variances can be granted, and we're talking about now two types of devariances. The fact that there's multiple uses that are not permitted by your local code. If this were mixed residential and commercial use, it would be permitted perhaps under that criteria, but since it's more than one commercial use, we need your approval to have that situation because now it's two principal uses or more occupying one property. The second devariance is that this type of processing and warehousing is not permitted use under your current zoning code. So I'll go over what I said that the positives were, but the negatives I also have to satisfy in terms of satisfying the two-pronged test of the statute. The variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good because there won't be any noticeable difference to any of the neighboring properties or the public in general in terms of the appearance of the building, the traffic characteristics coming to or from the building. There won't be any substantial noise or negative impact on those neighboring uses. So from that standpoint, the first prong is satisfied. The second prong is granting the variances will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan, your master plan, or the zoning ordinance. The proposed small-scale manufacturing and repackaging use is less intensive than many of the surrounding industrial uses that are embedded in the Valley section surrounding this property. So from that standpoint, it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the plan because these are embedded uses already in that characteristic of the Valley. We also owe you an enhanced quality of proof, and I would offer that on the basis that while the BG zone is intended to accommodate mixed commercial and residential uses, there are a multitude of other industrial uses east and south of this site that are more intensive in nature than what's proposed here. As I mentioned previously, this is a type of building that's embedded, it's part of the fabric of this neighborhood. Changing out the tendency from one commercial use to another, in this case, will not be noticeable and will not be a detriment, but it is a factor that is not reflected in your current master plan or zoning ordinance.
Mr. Baumann, take us through the parking variance now. Let's go through that aspect.
Well, as I mentioned previously in other aspects of my testimony, the existing proposed manufacturing repackaging use is rather a unique use because of its times of operation and its inflow of employees and traffic versus the other uses in the building.
Will visitor parking be required, for example? Any parking by visitors be required?
No, this is not a public visitation operation. I don't know that that was pointed out too succinctly, but the general public cannot come here and purchase product. This is going to be a buy order, telephone, internet, whatever, where these bulk packages will be ordered based on what the demand for their final products look like on a week-by-week basis.
Then they're sent out by delivery by truck, or they're shipped out by...
That's right. Their two box trucks will be used to deliver stores to stores, and if necessary, if they have an out-of-state shipment, they will be sent through to, or delivered to, either UPS, FedEx, or whatever, for being handled by that carrier out of state.
So again, no product will be sold on the premises, correct?
That's correct.
Continue with your testimony on this parking, and then we'll go through, please.
Well, the parking requirements by your ordinance would be fourteen vehicles, but I think I've given you, and prior to my testimony, Mr. Doughty gave you a ballpark of how many employees he intends to have. The number of coincident employees will never exceed the parking capacity on the site, so from that standpoint, you have a reason to look at the site from granting the parking based on what's its real demand. There isn't going to be a demand for more than ten parking spaces, which, incidentally, as I recall from the last application that you saw for this envelope of space, I think we needed twenty-one spaces, but similarly, in that case, they had the same type of a unique situation in their operations that did not conflict traffic-wise or parking demand-wise as this application in its context with the other existing users of the building. So I believe on that basis, the board can grant it as a seventy, section 70C2, where the benefits of having a reasonable amount of parking that will not be exceeded by demand versus the detriment of granting the variance, where in this case, we don't need the parking on a practical basis. So I would offer that as a rationale for the board, considering the parking variance. I would also offer the fact that since we're not doing anything on the site, inside or outside, we would ask the board to waive site plan approval because there really isn't anything to change on the site.
Is that also because this application was just here in January?
Yes, I think it looks familiar to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. I have no further questions of Mr. Baumann as planner. I would like to ask him to the board for questioning.
Mr. Valama?
What was the previous one that made for...
The mellow wash, it was a clean washing.
A clean washing.
But it was really two uses. They were going to have a small used car operation as a sub occupancy of their operation.
So in your opinion, that's, this is less intense?
Yes, because that would have been four uses in the building. Between the used parts?
I can't hear you, it's me.
It would have been four uses of the building, now we're reducing that to three.
Any other questions?
I asked my questions.
I've answered, didn't I?
Yeah, I asked them.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, does anybody else have any questions? Does any members of the public have any questions of this witness for planning, engineering, whatever? No, okay, and that's it?
That is correct.
And you may sum up?
Mr. Val, do I...
Oh, does any members of the public wish to give testimony on this application? I'm sorry. Mr. Renato, yes, I can't see, it was balanced in my way. Just wanted to make sure you had no comment there. Okay, you may sum up.
Mr. Douglas, well, members of the board, I believe you've had ample opportunity not only to review the plans, as I'm certain that you did, as you are always very prepared with your questioning, but also to listen to the testimony, the testimony of my client who is happy to come to Baumann to relocate a beautiful business, a family-owned business that he's been operating for twenty-five years successfully. It's a harmless business, it's having its making products, it's put out into market that are edible, enjoyable, goodies and nuts, and so he would like to continue that, perhaps make Baumann a hallmark for his product to go out, and he'd say, oh yes, they're producing that here, so that's a good thing. Aside from that, the operation that he intends to conduct on the site is not intense. It involves a small number of employees, as he's indicated, and he's very willing to comply with any other regulations pertaining to it. He has things that will go before the tough scrutiny of Mr. Di Lorenzo when it gets to him. I'm not going to reiterate the comments, the positive and negative criteria of Mr. Baumann, I think he did a fantastic job putting it into the record so that it's all there before the board if they heard, I'm sure he did. So with that and without further belaboring this, I would like to request that you grant the application in favor of my client. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Mr. Valama, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, so, it's not really, it's a whole, my only concern was, and I expressed that, I hope the business thrives. My only caveat would be if we do approve this, and they do thrive, and they move upstairs and stand, because I would like them to come back before the board.
That's what it's granted, they're not performing, you have to come back.
So I'd like them to come back, and because, and we have the parking here as well.
Of course, they're more, more...
More attentive, yeah.
I hope, I hope that would be the good fortune that they have to come back because they need to stand.
So, that's my, so I don't have an issue, other than that if they do, obviously, they have a compliant law, a code enforcement regulations, move on in their equipment, and the health department as well.
Yes, yeah.
I'm fine with that, and like I said, if they have the, they have the good fortune of being expansive, they come back before the board, so we can have another consideration.
In the event the board approves this, following up on what Willie said, in addition to our normal conditions...
Right, and the hours, we need to put the hours...
Yeah, I had hours of operation, which I understand would be nine to five on weekdays.
Right, they said they have weekends, right?
Nothing about, nothing about weekends. The chimney, if it's constructed, obviously, for quote...
All renovations have to comply.
Well, that's all Frank Lee's job. What we're approving is the plan that was submitted per Mr. Baumann, six to one. That's the plan, first floor, board health requirements, whatever they are, and would the board want me to add no retail sales?
No retail sales.
And I think we've broken new ground in considering happiness and wholesomeness as a matter of fact. It's never been argued before, but...
So, happy inside.
Very nutritious, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. If no one else has it in their head, I'd like them to make a motion to the board with the stated conditions.
Okay, motion to approve the stated conditions, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
I can't tell.
Casa.
Yes. Get out of here.
Lozal.
Yes.
Fucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Wano.
Yes.
Sodershire.
Yes, approved seven to nothing, don't run away, we have a motion, I mean, we have a motion, we have a resolution to be memorialized.
Yes.
And we have a private session?
And then we have private session. We're going to, we're going to make motion for that.
Thank you very much.
Resolution of memorialization, matter of fire mass medical center, application BG two thousand seventeen zero zero seven. One fire mass medical center. Caruso.
Charlie.
It's now two to nine.
Charlie.
Caruso, yes, yeah.
Yes, yes.
She, Sheldon, Wano, and Sodershire.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to go into private for legal matters.
Um, Mr. Um...
Breakout.
Breakout. Said we should title it a little different.
No, 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 no.
No. Is that okay?
Legal matters, legal matters.
Legal matters, okay, okay. Can I have a second? Mr. Caruso, seconding. Clerk, call the roll.
Caruso.
Yes, okay.
Casa.
Yes.
Lozal.
Yes.
Fucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Wano.
Yes.
Sodershire.
Yes. We can do this two ways, we can go in the back, get this clear the room. Clear the room, please, we're going to the private session. Mr. Di Lorenzo, please stay, thank you.
Tell me how to private session.
Caruso.
Charlie.
Casa.
Yes.
Lozal.
Yes.
Fucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Wano.
Yes.
Sodershire.
No.
No, just come out.
I'm going to vote low on everything, I'm on.
I'm going to say we're done.
Now, is it?
Peanut butter cake.
If you want, if you want me to write the letter that we discussed, do it.
Yeah, I have a motion.
We said a voice vote, and then we don't throw anything.
I drafted a letter to Mr. Gashir.
Before, before the, can we have a motion to see, Paul, the members of the zoning board, who wants to have the reconsideration of that application?
Well, I have a motion on the table.
Well, guess what? You can't make a motion to reconsider because you voted no.
I didn't make a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
All right, so, so...
The sense was, do you want me to draft a letter?
Motion to adjourn?
No.
No, not me. But Jesse, is this putting a letter together for the board to look?
Thank you, can I have a second on that, please?
Yeah, a letter.
Okay.
So it's, it's to put a letter together, right now, holding, leaving our options open, just the letter.
For that property, on the address.
Three fourteen, three sixteen, Washington Avenue.
Yes.
Caruso.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lozal.
Yes.
Fucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes, yes.
Wano.
Yes.
Sodershire.
Mr. Sheldon had it.
You want to vote, you want to make a motion.
It's not a strong enough letter. See if you can hear Jerry.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go on, boys.
I want to ask the board, who here would support a motion to reconsider the application of Mr. Rueda? If push, game to shove? If you have push, take to shove, right?
Well, it's not a vote, Danny, it's just a discussion.
We should think about it, but let's hope the letter does it.
Are you asking for a vote? Because for a vote, I'm like, I won't second it.
You can't.
Let me just finish.
But you can't, you voted no. Only a person who voted yes can make a motion to second. Am I wrong about this?
Mr. Sheldon.
I feel like I'll come back home, I'm kidding. My old man yelling at me.
Flashback.
I would like to make a motion that the planning board reconsider the application of Mr. Rueda. I could get a second?
Second.
You mean, in lieu of the letter? In lieu of the letter.
Oh, you want the letter, but I'll second it anyway.
Caruso.
It doesn't mean...
Casa.
Yes.
Lozal.
Yes.
Fucci.
No.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Wano.
He can't vote.
Shut up, Jerry.
Oh, yeah, he could vote.
I can speak for myself, I don't need you.
You can vote.
I don't care.
You can vote on the motion.
Sodershire.
Because you can make a motion, second. Yes, I vote yes to.
So... To reconsider the...
So you're not sending a letter?
No, I, this vote was to bypass the letter to reconsider the application, to notify Mr. Caxton of reconsidering the application.
I pledge, for the record, I voted no, because that's, if I need litigation, so I pledge as all, that, 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 well, but, so I vote no.
It'll certainly put us back in the hunt, you know, back in the fray. Do you want to call Bob and tell him that it's...
No, I'm not going to call him nothing. That's not my job to send him something pretty good.
Well, you had a lot to say five minutes ago. You just involved the town in litigation, I don't know if you all even know that. We're spending tax dollars, tax money dollars for no reason at all, and I'll be telling everybody that.
Go ahead.
I will, yeah, I assure you. I assure you.
I think we need to have a precedent to stop this absurd use of the zoning board.
No, precedent is doing smart litigation. This is...
And/or not issuing permits.
Right, right, this might, we have, we have every legal standing on... This might, we have, we have every legal standing on earth here. And you want to, and we want to pound our chest. More smarter than that.
We're not pounding our chest.
Yes, you are.
We were lied to.
You just, you cannot tell somebody was thinking in their head, Jerry. And listen, any lawyer will tell you that. So again, do what you want, guys, you voted one way, then you voted another, which is just amazing to me. And you, you're a pimp.
Me?
Yeah, you.
I'm surprised at you.
We wanted to approve back in April because we thought Mr. Ruida was operating with a good basis with us.
You cannot, Mr. Sheldon, you cannot tell a person's...
My thing is, he still has two years.
You can't. I'm sorry, I agree with you. Moral of the law seems wrong, but you cannot say as a point of law what was in a person's head. So I was looking to protect us as a talent check.
But you also can't make him get disbursement now. He can get it in a year.
But he shouldn't be putting it up for sale if he don't have it.
You can't tell something, you're not, you're not God.
The part that you're not understanding is that will be in the contract. The attorney, the mortgage person...
We'll put one in the contract. What's going to be in the contract?
That's what they're going to put.
Location has been approved. It has to say nothing about that needs to have the thing.
The buyer is going to put what the buyer is aware of.
And Jerry, and Jerry said, and Frank says no.
When he calls to the attorney, the attorney is going to check it and it's...
I told you, Frank's going to tell them, you can't build. So the guy's going to be buying the property on the false pretenses. That's my point. I'm trying to learn that.
He will buy it. He will buy it. It will not close until he gets that...
Resolution.
Proof, yes.
The problem that I have is that there's a key word missing from that realty listing. It says, as it is printed, it says approved. The key word that's missing is conditionally approved. And because that's missing, Mr. Ruida is falsely representing.
You want me to...
But the buyer is not going to close without that in hand.
You get buyers better, not smart. They can't afford search.
Because the buyer is going to... The attorney's person are.
Smart, a smart buyer, a smart lawyer is going to want to see the resume.
They have to have a search. The attorney is going to make sure they have a search.
How did that get approved? Just can I see it? Hopefully, they're smarter.
I want to see the approval to see what the stipulations are, if there is any.
You know what's going to happen here? A poor person who is just trying to get ahead in life may buy this thing without going through all the things of search and this, that, and the other thing.
Can't.
That's fifty years ago. That doesn't happen now.
And it's going to blow on his face.
You can't do that now, Jerry.
That doesn't happen now.
You're talking nonsense. You're talking nonsense.
That doesn't happen now.
We voted first, we voted first, I think it was six to one to have me throw a resolution together keeping all of our options.
A letter.
A letter, I'm sorry, a letter. Then there was a motion made to bypass the letter, forget the letter, and put it on the docket.
No, he didn't say bypass the letter, finally.
I didn't think that it was bypass the letter. I thought it was the letter and that was...
No, he didn't say that.
The letter first.
I didn't say that the second time, I did bypass, but we could...
You want me to put in the letter that the board is seriously considering our legal options, including the possibility of rescinding me, group, something like that?
That's what I thought you were dominating the question.
That's not bad.
I can do that.
I can settle for that.
I would not rush into...
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say rushing into it, but if you put in that letter that way, you didn't want to put that. You did not want to put that we may reconsider. I don't want to give my, my, my idea.
I'll say, all our legal options, including, including the possi, including the possibility of taking action to rescinding groups, period.
That's good, I'm happy. Now I'm happy.
We should have said that.
My job is to...
No, I said it before. You said you didn't want to tell them what you have in mind. That's what you said. You can watch the tape for all I care.
So we doing that?
If we can put into the letter, it's mentioned that we're considering...
Rescinding?
Rescinding the option.
Including, including rescinding.
All legal options, including the rescission of the previous approval.
And that's, and that I'm satisfied.
I want some teeth.
That's my point. I want some teeth. Yeah, that's what we've done with the first way.
That's just be done by, that's be done by vote.
Can you send it back to the zoning board if it comes for a permit?
Would need to, would need to be done by vote.
If he doesn't vote.
If it comes for a permit, you send it back to the zoning board.
The way we just agreed to this?
If they want to.
You want to do it, okay, then I'll make the motion.
Fine, we have to.
A letter saying, mention rescission.
The word rescission's got to be mentioned in there. All legal action, including possible rescinding or reconsideration of the application.
I'll make that motion.
Good.
I already made it, you can second.
Seconding, whatever.
Right, there you go.
All right, we happy now?
Just so we clear, if I may ask, counsel, counsel, before we vote, this supersedes the other two votes.
Yeah, we're not jumping into a hearing.
Does anybody understand that?
I agree with that settlement.
Okay, good, okay.
That's a compliment.
Do you have a comment?
Roll call, Gina.
Oh, ready now?
Yes.
Yes.
Caruso.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lozal.
Yes.
Mafucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Wano.
Yes.
Del Gershwin.
Yes. Full motion to adjourn.
Second.
Let's adjourn.
You happy, Jerry?
I'm happy. Now I'm happy. As long as there was some teeth, some teeth, this thing is good.